It's the July 27, 2021 Planning Board Meeting. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of members that aren't with us tonight. Kevin Robinson isn't going to be here, one of the board members, and the other board member that's not here and maybe late is John Gatski. So they're not here right now. Do we have a sign-in sheet? Do you have a pad for a sign-in sheet we could pass around to the people in the audience? All right. So the first thing on the agenda tonight is a new A&R plan, and this is for 223 Meadow Street, Atwood Solar. It's map 82 lot 1-1-ah. And this is for discussion and possible endorsement. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Hamilton Carrier with Ironwood Renewables. With me I have Dale Knapp, Environmental Consultant, and Greg Dixon, Engineering. So if you have any questions on those aspects, just please let me know. We have a pretty straightforward A&R plan. We are separating a primary lot for a solar farm. Each lot will have 150-foot road frontage off of Meadow Street. It also will observe the minimum of 60,000 square foot. The lot we're separating is 1.7 acres, which is 74,000 square feet. That lot has 201 feet of road frontage. The remaining road frontage is actually going to be our access for the solar farm, and that's exactly 150 feet. You want to look at the plan, let me know if you have any questions about that.
Does any of the board members have any questions about this?
I do only because, and I don't even, I'm not entirely certain why this is in there. I see there's a proposed 16-foot-wide secondary emergency access. That has nothing to do with what we're approving tonight, correct? We're just approving the separation of the lot. It has nothing to do with the proposed solar farm or proposed accessways or anything, correct?
That's correct. We were just showing that basically as the project area, but it has nothing to do with the A&R.
Anybody else have any questions? Do you want a bigger plan or something to see?
Yeah, I would.
Do you have a bigger plan that you could?
Yes, sir.
Why do you want to break it up anyways? I mean, is there a reason you're breaking the two pieces of property up?
Well, this was the first solar project we drew off of Meadow Street next to Cobblestone Lane, and I think you were there on the site walk that we did. It was the very first one, and there was a group of houses, and then we went up a driveway, and then the solar project's going to be in the rear. In this particular one, it's a big piece of land, so you're making a house lot and then also a lot for the solar project.
Yeah, the land owner's building a house right on the front of the road, and so we're separating that from the actual solar farm. Yeah, that site walk was in late January. I don't know if you were there or not.
And this is going to leave the separated property conforming? It's not going to make a non-conforming property out of the other property?
Correct.
They have 50-foot rear setbacks and 30-foot side back.
Yes, sir. Yeah, they all meet that. Yes, sir.
Basically, this is just to separate the house, so they have two lots, one for the solar project, which has to be, have the correct frontage and the correct square footage.
Well, that's what I was asking, separating.
Yeah, and then they're separating from the house. So they're just making it into two lots.
And last question, is it being separated from 8210R or 8220R?
Should be 8211R.
10R, and they have the appropriate 50-foot rear setback behind the house?
Yes, yep, it's 50.
Because it doesn't specifically?
It's 100, isn't it 186 feet? Yeah.
From the rear of the house to the rear of the lot? Yes, to the new property lot, yeah.
Yeah, it's getting greater than 183 feet, because that's actually one property line, so.
Could you show me what you're looking at? Because I'm.
So basically, what they're saying is they're going to take this one. So I see the 201.
He just said it was.
That's fine. Then he said this way.
Oh, okay, I see. Over here, so.
Which one of those is the?
Yeah, I can get you one. This is, I could just give you this.
201-4.
Was, so this was all one, and this too?
The solar property still hasn't entered the gift.
Right, right.
It's this. Separate that from the right.
So it's this whole, where these two blocks.
So this is the original property right here?
So this is, this is all.
Okay, all right. I thought you were saying it was being separated from one of these two properties.
No, I think that's originally what the whole lot was.
But it had previously been separated? Okay.
I believe that's where, probably that's where this is.
Yep.
And this will, this will become one lot, and then this line right here is the only big line, and that's.
So it'll be just a slot here?
Yeah.
And this is going to still part of that?
No, no, it's.
This is the, it's own exist a lot. This is, this is a lot, this kind of long.
Okay, okay, okay. I see what you're saying. That already exists. This and this is part of this lot.
Yeah.
You just want to put a line there to separate that. And you got 150 feet of frontage right there.
If there are no, if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to endorse the plan for 223 Meadow Street.
Can Elia Shea so makes that motion?
Set a second.
Okay, so, and Ellen seconded it. So we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, seeing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, good. So that was unanimous. All right, so we'll go on to, so now this is the same property, again, 223 Meadow Street. Yeah.
Just to talk about 287 Tremont Street, we're going to let people know that that's not being.
Yeah, that's our plan.
And follow through with the request for a continuance.
Okay.
We're going to handle that in the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. All right. Before we go on to number two on the continued public hearings, we, notices were sent out, but it didn't get on the agenda. So, and it turns out that the owner of the property and the engineers decided that they would like to continue the public hearing, and this is for 287. It had been advertised for 287 Tremont Street, JCM Carver Acquisitions LLC, and it's the Ericsson's Ice Cream piece of land, and that is going to be rescheduled to August 24th. So if there's anybody, so we'll have to vote on that. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to reschedule the meeting for 287 Tremont Street, JCM Carver Acquisitions LLC, to 7 o'clock, August 24th.
Can Elia Shea so makes that motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Ellen second for the discussion, seeing none. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. All right. All right, so now we'll continue to 223 Meadow Street, and this is a continuance of a public hearing on the application of Ironwood Renewable LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to sections 2230, 3100, 3580, and 5300 of the Carver zoning bylaw. And this is for a solar photovoltaic installation on 223 Meadow Street. And I think what happened is, is that we actually went out on a site walk in January for that, and so then this has been in development all this time. So I think tonight you were going to give us an update on the new revised plan, and then we'll continue this to our August 24th meeting.
Yeah, definitely. Wanted to give you an updated plan. We did walk the site January 25th. Since then, we've been working on the setbacks of the project. Since we've last met, the northern property line now is a 50-foot setback all the way around from property line to property line. The eastern side of the property or of the project is also 50 feet, and we're abiding by the 200-foot setback set by the town on the southern side of the project. So now the project itself is a total of 11 acres with approximately 10.5 acres of clearing. Everything else is relatively the same. We've provided you maps of the setbacks from the wetlands and the river, which we can go over that first, and if you have any questions. We did meet with Brooke Monroe further this month, and I can have Dale kind of touch on that.
Sure. Real quick, if beneficial, we had a site walk. Jim joined us, and we reviewed the location of the regulated resources in the field and then also the setbacks proposed for the project. We GPS located what we could within the footprint of the parcel we had access to, and then geo-referenced the cranberry bogs adjacent. And so the plan that we provided to Brooke and the subsequent letter response that we got from her determined that the footprint of the project did not require approval from the Conservation Commission based on our compliance with those minimum setbacks. And happy to field questions on the resources present or anything we discussed during that site walk, if there are any.
Okay, so, so on the, let's see. I know that, so did you, did you have to get any, in order to get, to get smaller setbacks to the properties, did you have to get signed affidavits from the?
Yeah, we have signed waivers from the northern abutter and from the two eastern abutters, both, all for 50 feet. Be happy to provide copies of that.
Okay. So, and that was, did you make that closer?
Yeah, originally it was all 100 feet, but to kind of follow the bylaws and get a project, it is a narrow piece of property, and so we had to make it work where we could. And so we were able to get the waivers from the north and the east and make a project that way.
All right, so then on the southern side, you actually had to move everything back into the property in order to meet the 200-foot setback?
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right. And then you had to move it away from the river on the westerly side?
We've had that 200-foot setback for the river.
You had that before?
Yeah, and we met with Brooke, and she okayed it all as well.
Okay. All right. Any questions from any of the planning board members?
I do, I see you're proposing six telephone poles at the end of the property. I'm kind of wondering why it's not underground until the crossover interconnection?
If you could, if you could please use a microphone and identify yourself just so that we can.
And one thing I did want to note, we did meet with Fuss and O'Neil back in the spring and have his original comments from Andy Gleins, and so we're working with that as well. We plan to meet with Andy in between this meeting and the August 24th meeting to kind of figure everything out and make sure we're okay with him.
Okay.
Yeah, the six poles are your normal.
Give us your name, please, again.
Oh, sorry. Greg Dixon. I'm a civil engineer on the project. The six poles are normally what is needed for the interconnection with Eversource, but those conversations we can have to think about going underground, but that's just the normal interconnection and all the equipment that's mounted up there for shut-offs and disconnects and stuff like that with the.
Tom, bylaws call for all that to be pad-mounted and everything to be underground?
Okay, yep.
Unless you receive, unless Eversource specifically says that it can, it has to be due to soil or topography or a couple other issues?
Yeah. I'm not seeing that being an issue on this site, so I assume we just, we could go underground with that.
Obviously, when the time comes, the utility will be really involved in determining what's required there, but all the project-owned infrastructure is buried. So, you know, the pads, the interconnections, the panels, but that ultimately will be a utility, that will be utility equipment, and so if Eversource is going to be required to comply with your standards, then they will.
Where, where is the, I've forgotten it so long now that we've been out there. Where was the interconnection proposed anyway in this area?
It's off of Meadow Street. It's, I believe it's where we walked in when we met. It's, yeah.
It's just across. You're looking at your plan?
Yeah.
Right there. Yeah, this spot right here.
Okay.
Right here is the existing utility infrastructure, and so this is sort of stepping it up to connect to roadside distribution.
So that's a, that's a road that you're going to have to build to the project, because I remember we did go down an existing, and we parked in an existing driveway when we did the site walk?
Yeah, that'll be a new.
So that, so the, the road to the project is just going to be, if that's north, it should be, it's going to be south of that driveway.
Did you park?
No, they parked right here, so it's north of that.
Yep.
Isn't it right by the POI?
Yep. Yeah, the driveway would be north of their existing business.
Okay.
It'd be on that teeny strip of the 150-foot that we just discussed on the A&R plan. It would just come right in from there.
And so that's what Eversource is, that's the way they usually do things? I know that we've been dealing with a cluster of poles at the end, and it looks like you're going to have to cross the street to the, to the main lines anyway, right?
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Rich.
So this is showing a gate at the end of the road, but yet your power, underground power is going to go all the way up to that where the six poles start?
Yep. So the entire solar farm itself will be surrounded by a fence, and that's per electric code, so it'll be a seven-to-eight-foot fence that will have a gate that will restrict access for.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying that you're actually going to have a gate, but the underground's going to be walled beyond the gate?
Yeah, yeah.
On the opposite side of the field?
Yep.
The gate's going to be 300-plus feet from the road, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the gate's going to be 300 feet plus from the road.
Okay.
To the poles, so that'll all be underground from there all the way out to however the interconnection works.
And then Stadson have a problem with that, right? Has the fire department looked at this, the new plan?
They've seen it, and actually, I met with them last. Yeah, I met with Jesse two weeks ago, and I could have Greg kind of talk on it. We talked about the 16-foot emergency access. He said, you know, the radius is fine for the brush fire trucks. They could get around. It was adequate turn radiuses, and we discussed the battery storage. You know, that itself is kind of open-ended, but I could let Greg kind of touch on that.
Yeah, we, we have not yet decided, just because of the nature of batteries and solar, it's a continuing sort of progression of how those are being developed. So we have an idea, which we're going to give him sort of ideas of what the batteries would be like now, but with a conversation that by the time we go to build this, a few years down the road or a year down the road, it could be a completely different battery. So we just mentioned at that meeting that we'll have continued back and forth, so they know what sort of battery it is and how they would fight a fire at that location. We also discussed all the roads around the site and even talked about possibly putting in some additional gates for them to give them better access to other areas if they had to sort of have a gate in the back end so they could use our project to actually drive through the site and just access the back part of our property or even some areas off of our property, too. So we're looking to try to make it as easy as possible for them to get around the site.
And I say that Jim has, our engineers, looked at this too and made comments?
Yeah, there's a little bit of a stall because, you know, they're kind of dealing with some issues with the project. So Andy Gleins and company have been re-engaged so that, to review the project.
Okay.
So we expect, you know, a peer review letter to be drafted on this, and then, of course, the next step is to respond to the comments and then find a letter from the question room.
Yeah, we expect to do that in between this meeting and August. We'll get with.
August 24th?
Yeah, we'll get with Andy. Like I said, we're working from his original comments, you know, get his review on that and then make any necessary changes, and then show you guys that at the next meeting.
Okay.
Seeing this thing, seeing this whole thing drawn out. You guys are, you guys are going in and deforesting?
Yeah.
This, this area to put up a solar field?
Yeah, again, it's about 10 acres, and, you know, as, as the site currently is, it's full of cars and, you know, kind of, kind of messy, and so we plan on restoring the property. We will have to cut some trees.
Cut some?
10 acres.
Yeah, that, that's a lot. You know, there's a whole big to-do in this area about the, about wetlands and maintaining the town's character and everything else like that, and to go in, and I don't know how, I don't know how anybody can sit, can, especially even in the Conservation Commission, allow something like this to go on, to completely deforest that much to allow, to allow a solar field to go, to go into place, because once the solar field's done, we don't know what's going to happen after that. And that's, it's not okay in my book.
Sure. So I'm Dale Knapp. I'm the environmental consultant working on the project and helped coordinate with the Conservation Commission. I'm not sure I can kind of fully answer your question. Certainly, there's a, there's a loss of trees, but what we're trying to do here is avoid and minimize environmental impact to the greatest extent practical based.
Everybody avoids and minimizes environmental impact, closes a box, or they build over their cranberries.
Sure, so those are also impacts that would require permitting. So those are also wetland resources. So with this plan, we're building, citing the project in, in an upland area and avoiding impacts to jurisdictional resources under the Wetland Protection Act, and so, you know, it's not the entire parcel. It is, there are certainly trees out there, and those would be a loss. Is the concern, is your concern over a loss of habitat or a loss of sequestered carbon? Is there, what's the driver behind your concern over the conversion of those trees to renewable energy generation?
There's plenty of places to put it. It's unnecessary.
Well, I think, I can understand what you're saying.
Sorry, I don't like it.
But it's not, it's, unfortunately, it's not in our bylaws that, that, I mean, we've, we've allowed, most of the solar fields have gone over, some of them have been over cranberry bogs, some of them have been through sandpit areas that the bog owners have excavated. Some have, you know, cut down trees and they've, they've done this. Not, not many, but, but there's nothing in our bylaw that says, I mean, somebody's.
Nothing in our bylaws that says it's okay either.
No, but there's nothing in the.
Just because it's not mentioned in the bylaws doesn't mean it's not right.
I mean.
This isn't right.
But the thing is, is somebody could come in here and they could do a subdivision, and they'd be, they'd be cutting the property. They could, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but, I mean, I would imagine that a bog owner could go in there and cut the trees and, and do, you know, gravel removal, too. So, I mean, I guess the way to go about doing something like this, I mean, if you wanted to restrict, I mean, it would mean a bylaw change, wouldn't it? But, I mean, but, but I, but I can't see that there's any way to really stop this. I mean, there's other things that the property owner could go in there.
So if that's your, if that's your, the, the thought process about it, why don't we just gut the entire area that's 50 feet off the road and put up solar, turn the, turn the entire county into a solar field? I mean, that's essentially what we're looking at. This is step one. Get one of them in there, and then everybody else says, well, so, these guys did it, I'm going to do it. Next thing you know, the whole area, we've lost everything.
To that point, you couldn't have, you know, that many solar farms in Carver just due to interconnection on the grid? You know, you couldn't support that many projects?
Sure, you can't today.
But is there ever going to be? But is there ever going to be a need for that many solar...
But it progresses all the time.
You know, as, as Mr. Mackey said, there's been some projects in Carver that have cut down trees. You know, the, the landowner could make it a subdivision where they add more traffic and more neighbors. And, you know, this is a secluded solar farm. You know, yes, we are cutting down trees, but other than that, there's no environmental impacts to that, you know, besides the tree cutting.
And I, I know we've, I've mentioned this in the, in other meetings in this region where we, in Connecticut, oftentimes as part of the siting council process, we have to provide a detailed carbon analysis on when these projects create sort of that net environmental benefit. And so producing power from renewable resources has a much higher payoff for that piece of property than just keeping those trees in place. And I'd be happy to provide, not as, you know, we don't have a specific analysis for this site, but there, peer-reviewed scientific studies have been done in other parts of New England that, that showcase what the impact is positively on the environment from producing solar energy.
Okay, well, how about showing me something that is a tax benefit for the town?
Um, I mean, you guys...
Because my taxes just went up 200 bucks a month.
Yeah. And I'll have a direct answer to that. But if that's your concern...
But the concern, you're, you're, you're telling me that there's a positive financial benefit. But maybe for this person. But if it's not affecting my, if it's not affecting local taxes...
Sorry, if maybe...
Then what you're doing is just tearing out, tearing out a bunch of trees.
You might have...
Benefit one person.
There's a chance...
Instead of maintaining our area the way that the town has asked us to do.
Sure. Maybe you misunderstood. I was discussing environmental benefit. So thinking about sort of the, the cost on the environment. So being that, that the removal of trees is an impact. And so looking at the project's cost and benefit from an environmental perspective, I can't speak to the, the tax revenues potentially received by the town.
Yeah, but, you know, you take that much trees out, you're also getting rid of all the wildlife that's there. That's a big difference.
Are there, I know that we have some bird species kind of in proximity to the project. And a lot of those species across New England actually utilize these farms as habitats.
It's not even just the species. It's just the habitat the animals have that are local animals. You take 10 acres out of there, where are they going?
Well, I guess some of what we've seen these projects provide is a 20-year to, 20 to 35-year span where that project will have meadow grass underneath it, and it won't be a subdivision. It's not a hardscape. This is a very passive land use and species will utilize it. There's a pollinator mix planted under these. And so songbirds, small mammals absolutely use these sites, and I've seen it myself.
Yeah, we're going to have pollinator-friendly vegetation under the panels. Chair, just in regard to the taxes, so the town does negotiate, came in lieu of, with each of the solar projects. I'm not personally involved in those negotiations, so I don't have any figures to provide you. But what I could do is maybe get some information from the town assessor to show what some, you know, recent projects have, have been agreed to and what the tax revenue is. So, you know, these projects do pay more taxes than, say, you know, as an undeveloped piece of land.
So that's, that's the benefit to the taxpayers in town is that it, it does, you, you get tax revenue from these fields. And you get ins- inspectional fees at the beginning too?
Right, so building permit fees and electrical permit fees, some of which can be very substantial. At one point, we had four projects come in at the same time. And between, and between them all, there's approximately $800,000 worth of, you know, permit fee revenue that came in for those projects.
Majority of the site will stay forested as well. 24 acre, 24-acre site. We're only taking 10. There's still another 14 acres. And now with the 200 feet in front of the project, it's a larger continuous chunk than what's originally proposed. Because we were going to have two kind of 100-foot buffers on either side, which would have made a smaller, two smaller sections of forest. So now there's a, a larger...
Speaking in the microphone, you also need to pick it up on tape too.
Yep. So I was just mentioning that this site is 24 acres, or greater than 24 acres. We're only proposing about 10 and a half acres of clearing. That will leave a remainder of 13 and a half that will remain forested while the solar farm is, is there.
Any other questions? If there aren't, or if, if you think of any, this is a public hearing and I don't know if anybody in the audience has any comments that they would like to make? All right, I don't see anybody coming forward. All right, so the board has seen the project. You had these pros and cons. I guess, they say, you know, we've had a few of these where, where trees have been cut down over the project. In this particular case where this project is 300 feet off the road, like I said, you know, a project comes along and, I mean, it could be, you know, like this, it could be made into maybe a subdivision. So I, you know, I don't know how you stop this. But whether it's detrimental or not, there are other things that, that could happen there that, that would allow the tree cutting also. So there is nothing in the bylaw that says that you can't cut trees down to put the, a solar field in. So if there was, then, then you could maybe object to something like this. But I, yeah. All I can say is, is right now, you can think about it. And we'll, if nobody has any other questions, we can, we can, I know that some of the members here, has everybody seen this, done a site walk? Did you do a site walk?
No, I did not do a site walk.
Yeah. Ellen did. I know that I did. And I think that Connie did. John didn't do a site walk. I mean, would it help if you get somebody to do a site walk with you? Just to see the, the land, okay? Did you want to see it, Rich?
No, not really.
Okay. All right, well, we'll think about it and we can, so entertain a motion to continue. So entertain a motion to continue 223 Meadow Street on the application of Ironwood Renewable LLC for a ground-mounted solar photovoltaic installation to continue the public hearing to 7 o'clock on August 24th.
Cornelius Shea so makes that motion.
Second.
Okay, and second by Ellen. Further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. So if you could, it, it may be helpful if you brought some scientific information.
I could provide that if you were a little advanced in your...
Yeah.
For a project of this scale, it's typically not required. But, you know, you, you could, we could sort of reference, fix on scale that project, the age of the forest. I could try to sort of summarize what, what the benefit might look like. A lot of what goes into these...
Sorry. A lot of the power procurements that are done through PURA, you know, they have to, their, their laws require them to demonstrate, you know, a net environmental benefit for those projects to be permitted. And so it's a very rigorous process. So I'll provide some of those materials as soon as I get back to the office tomorrow. Because I think they, they may be beneficial for the board.
All right, thank you. All right, so next on the agenda is the application of Miriam Gorey requesting a special permit pursuant to sections 5300 and 2230 of the Cava zoning bylaw located at 149 South Main Street in Cava for a hobby slash commercial kennel in a residential agricultural district. So this was continued from July 13th. And I think tonight we could, could just hear an update of, of what's going on out there. I know that Jim and I have, have gone out there a second time just to check the fence and to check the driveways that are out there. Because some of the neighbors had some concerns about the use of the driveways and whether, on whose property those driveways were on. So Jim checked into that. And I think that Ms. Gorey had a surveyor out there to, to mark out the, the property lines. And so if, if you want to tell us about that, if you could just come up to the tele, to the microphone.
Hi, everyone. So, so, yeah, you guys, Bruce and Jim came out and did kind of a rough, but pretty accurate survey. And then the surveyors happened to come out last week. They had kind of said, we'll come out when we can. So they came out and they marked the line that we're kind of most concerned about, which is the, where the driveway and the town property, where my fence goes over that. So they marked that along the line where basically I would push the fence back. I think it's, ends up being about, well, it's kind of, and it looks like an angled line to me. So it ends up being about maybe three feet, eight feet. So I'm going to have to move it back around that much. And they also put in a, a stick to kind of show us where my property and the neighbor's property abuts to the town property, which is the dirt part of the driveway that, that you guys were worried about. So that, at least to me, seems clarified. And that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I, I did get a rough estimate on moving the fence and I'm just waiting to hear back for scheduling that, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's good. Did you find out how much it was going to be about?
Well, they told me it was seven, $7 per linear foot. And I measured it, but I'm thinking I measured wrong. Because it doesn't, it's not as much as I was thinking. It's be under $1,000. If, if I'm right, that's doable for me.
Okay.
But I was thinking originally it was going to be more like two grand or more.
Uh-huh.
So I kind of have to just double-check that.
All right. So, yeah, so Jim and I did look at that. We looked, I know that the neighbors had concerns about some trimming, but it appeared, and, and Jim could talk about this too, but it appeared that the trimming that you did was actually on the town property.
Yeah.
And, and it wasn't on anybody else's property. It is a strange piece of land because it's at the intersection where the intersection flares out and that's where there was a taking. So, so actually, it looks like if somebody just was walking along the street that, that from the fence to the road, I kind of took a rough measurement and it's, and it's 40 feet there. And you would think that that would all be your property too, but it isn't. It's because of the taking for the new intersection. There was a lot, lot of land that was taken out there. So part of your paved driveway is on the town land, which everybody's driveway is. And, and then the dirt road, which is like another driveway that leads to your property, we found out that that was, was actually on town land too. So, so what, so, okay, so I don't know if anybody has any other questions about this. I, I would like to see, just to, to end this so that we could get it done, is if, if, if you could just move that fence, then I think, you know, that, that would take care of it.
But I do think that, that fence has to be taken off the town property. Yeah.
And at least moved on to your property.
Yeah.
By, you know, inches or a foot or, or whatever.
Okay.
From, from there. So what I was, what I was hoping to do would be to, maybe if we could reschedule this meeting to September 28th. And hopefully you might have the fence moved back by then.
Okay.
And then we could talk about, you know, conditions and stuff like that. And hopefully wrap this thing up.
Yeah, that would be great. I, I, I've been trying to get in touch with the guy who put the fence in originally. I just haven't heard back from him. But when I, when I had talked to him, I think a few meetings back, he had said, or whenever we first discussed moving the fence, last meeting, he had originally said September. I just need to get a confirmation on that before I can say, oh, yes, I'll definitely have it done.
Okay.
So, but I, I'm shooting for that.
But you're in the works to try to get that done.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think once we have that, and if you could, again, at that meeting, could tell us how. I know that the neighbors said that the dogs from your property really didn't bark. And you did have a plan on keeping the dogs quiet. I think most of the dog barking was from another business that was down the street from your house. And that's not your problem that I can see. That would be the dog officer's problem. But that's not yours. As long as you keep the dogs that you have on your property quiet. And then I think, you know, to move the fence, keep the dogs quiet. And then also to make sure when, if you do walk the dogs, we'll have this in the conditions. If you walk the dogs around in the area, that you, that you do pick up any dog droppings. And, and then in the conditions too, we'll have something about, you know, weekly maintenance to get rid of the, the dog droppings and all that. So, but, but I think that's the, the biggest hurdles that we have. So if you could get that done, I, I think that would, that would certainly make me happy.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board?
So there was your property, all the stuff on your property was not on the other person's property then? It was all on town property?
Yes.
If I'm understanding?
Yes, so my...
So that second driveway, people are pulling down, it's not their land, it's town land?
Right, right, yeah.
And then there's a, so if you, have you been down to the property, Rich?
I've been out there. I'm just trying to...
Oh, that's right. Yeah, so you get into that right turn lane and then you come across her driveway. You make a right turn. And then the paved portion that goes to the right, that's on town land until you get down beyond the shed. And then there's a slice that belongs to her. And if you go in, you take a left, it's a kind of a dirt road going to the left. And it goes out to Tremont Street. That is also on town property.
Yes, because I do remember that. But I also remember her neighbors there own property next to hers. And they were saying they thought maybe she was on their property. So that's, survey said it wasn't, right?
Right.
Okay, that's all.
And, you know, some of the pictures I took, you know, you know, this shows that property corner.
Okay.
So on, showing the front to right. So on the left side is Maryam Gorey's property on... So on the left side is Miriam Gorey's property, on the right is the neighbor's property. And then as you're looking out in front of that post right there, that's where the town property is.
Okay.
And, and then on one of the plans in the packet, this is the, who's the Jeffrey Shory survey. You can see where the property lines are. And so when Bruce and I went out, we kind of used this as kind of a guide to figure out
Where everything was.
Where everything was. And so this one doesn't show where the kennels are, but there's another one by Arthur Borden. Get the pages separated. We're kind of, it's the one by Arthur Borden, and it shows the property. And you can see where, you know, it definitely, the property line does cut through where the, you know, the pens are out front. And so that's where she's working to remove that. And you can kind of almost correlate some of the pictures with, you know, the points on here, you know, to figure out where things are at, where the property line goes.
I'll ask, I'll ask Jim this question. What, what is it in regards to parking requirements for this particular?
I don't think there really are any parking requirements. It's kind of a pickup, drop-off kind of thing. You know, the way, the way she has it set up, you just kind of drive in, you drop off your, your dog, and then you're leaving and going.
Okay. Yeah, any other, any other of these, of these that we've done in town, there weren't really any parking requirements, yeah, because it was just pickup and drop-off. Wasn't really a huge business, you know, it was just half a dozen, six or eight dogs or something like that. I do see the neighbors out in the audience, is there anything that you would like to say? If there is, if you could just come up and talk into the, one of the microphones here, just give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Laurie Jewett, and it's 275 Tremont Street.
And David Jewett.
The only concern, other concern we had was that, you did mention picking up at the dogs, but I also would like her to use a leash.
Yes.
When she's walking the dogs.
Yeah, no, that was in the conditions for the other kennels that we've, we've done in town before. Yeah.
And then when you're talking about a hobby kennel, we looked into the Cava bylaws, and it was six to 10 dogs max. Is that gonna be part of the condition, six to 10 dogs max?
Well, actually, because it's a doggy daycare, it will come under the commercial kennel definition.
Oh, but she applied for hobby?
Well, she, she applied for both.
Okay.
It was, it was kind of like my first experience dealing with the bylaw, so, you know, kind of reviewed it and say, okay, the hobby kennel's not, you know, a doggy daycare is not really a hobby kennel, or vice versa. So it would have to be a commercial kennel.
So I, I looked in the bylaws, and I couldn't, I couldn't actually find a definition for commercial. I found kennel and hobby kennel. And I didn't, I didn't see it. So how many, how many dogs can a commercial kennel actually have?
I guess we're concerned about where she wants to enlarge. How much noise, additional noise are we gonna be looking at? Like, how many dogs, where's the max gonna be?
Yeah, I don't...
Is there gonna be a maximum amount of dogs allowed so that? And is there so many people per dogs, amount of dogs that when you have a daycare?
No, there isn't anything in the regulation. As long as you keep them either penned or in a shelter. And, and some of them are gonna be in the basement of her house. She keeps some there, she keeps some in the pens. And when somebody walks them, they have to be on the leash. I don't think that in the bylaw, it doesn't even say how many dogs you can walk, but generally it's just one or two, generally. I don't know, how many dogs do you usually walk at one time?
Average of three.
Average of three?
Usually.
Yeah, I guess it would depend upon the size of the dogs.
It's like, it's, once in a while, like five or two, but it's like two or three is usually. Because, I don't know.
Our concern really is the noise.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't, you know, we don't have, it's not really that bad right now, but our concern is what the maximum is.
What could it be?
And in section 6181, it calls out the kennel as a single premises with a collection of four or five dogs, three months or older, for breeding, boarding, sale, training, et cetera. And then it has hobby kennel, a single premises with a collection of six to 10 dogs, same description, three months or older.
You read from the, is that from the general bylaws?
This is from the, these bylaws right here. It was from, I believe it was 2015.
2019, I think, is the newest addition.
15, why, is there one more newer than this?
Okay, so you're, right, because you have the, you have the, there's the towns' general bylaws, which has a whole bunch of regulations about dogs. And then in the zoning bylaw, there are the definitions that we're kind of following in terms of a commercial kennel. So what I'll do is just read the commercial kennel definition. Show me any single premises with a collection of 11 dogs, 11 or more dogs, three months or older, that are maintained for any purpose or where four or more litters per year are raised, or where the boarding or grooming of dogs is performed as a business. So in this case, doggy daycare is boarding of dogs, and it's performed as a business. So she would come under the commercial kennel part of the bylaw. But there are no other standards in the rest of the bylaw other than those definitions. There's nothing that says, you know, how many feet, number, right, no maximum. But I guess...
We could possibly set that as a condition based on the size of the property, the available resources, and...
Right, and then, so one, one part of it is, if I remember correctly, you, you have your doggy daycare business, and then you were also looking to have some dog training happen at the property?
Yeah.
And so when would that occur? Is that during the daytime?
Yeah.
And then how many dogs would you anticipate? Because part of the...
Maybe one dog at times during the training.
Uh huh. And then, and then how many dogs do you typically have with your business? You know, what would you, do you have 10 dogs now?
On average, yeah, on average, you have 10.
Okay. Do you expect to ever have 15, up to 15 dogs?
Usually I do have a number like that. Like over 12. But it gets less manageable for me, and I haven't figured out or made a plan to definitely address handling more dogs than I can personally handle. So just to answer your question, Laurie, again, like I, I don't have a plan to have like 20 or 30 dogs. I don't know how I would make that happen. Because there's a, like, how much I like to pay somebody versus how much I can make.
Right, so you wouldn't, so with that in mind, you wouldn't object to having a maximum number then, correct?
Um...
Because from, from our, from our standpoint, I mean, I don't think anybody in this room wants to have a kennel move in next door, but we're okay with it, and we're willing to work with it. So I'm just thinking that if it flourishes and, and it provides good income, you might be prompted to hire someone else and put more cages out back. And if, if you're agreeable to a number, you know, I, that's, when the original hearing was scheduled, it was to operate a hobby slash commercial kennel, and we're, we're good with that. So if it, if that's enough, like a dozen dogs provides enough of an income, then, you know, I guess I'm just asking you, would that be agreeable?
I'll put this way, I don't wanna commit to anything, but I'm not, so I, I can't be...
All right, well, it's...
I would say, yeah, I don't wanna say yes, and then be like, oh, I wish I hadn't said yes. You know, like, so, and, but I, I don't anticipate, or no, I can't say that. I'm not sure what I'm gonna do yet, so, you know.
I was just wondering, now, are some of the dogs staying overnight? And are those gonna be outside, or are those gonna be inside?
So when, when they're boarded, they stay inside.
Okay. So that would eliminate some of the noise anyway?
Well, I have a question, Jim, to address this whole thing and the possibility of future expansion and whatnot. But at what point in time does this, or not necessarily what point in time, what, at what level would this move from being a hobby slash in a residential area to a full business that needs to be in a commercial or a different zoned area? In other words, if she were to take on 15, it'd be manageable there, but then decides, well, I wanna expand and try to take on 20 to 25, would, at that point in time, would she need to relocate to a more, to a less congested, as far as residentially congested area, to, to have a business?
So what I, you know, what kind of popped in my was, I said, okay, I'm gonna have a limitation, look at maybe 15 dogs as the cap. She has up to 12 dogs, and then gives a little flexibility there. Of course, it's not, that's just an opinion, not really based on any kind of standard, so.
Right.
And I, and I think once you start getting beyond that, that's where you really need a, you know, strictly my opinion, a more commercial location for that type of use.
Based on the access and parking though, I think it would behoove us to limit it to some degree on the amount of people that, if 12 or 15 people are showing up to drop their cars, dogs off at 7 o'clock in the morning, that, that particular access point and the availability of parking is, is rather...
Right, not everyone's showing up at the same time, I don't think.
They'll drop off some dogs, so it's kind of staggered. And you're, um, like 7, generally it's usually 7 to 10 a.m., and then around 3 to 6.
So what I could do is just give you my experience. So I have two dogs, they've been barnsful, and we had two different doggy daycare places that we went to. And a lot of them, you know, it's in big, huge commercial building, and they have, you know, probably 20 plus dogs buried every day. But there was only, you know, for drop-off, pickup, really only two, two to three spaces at the most, because people come in, they bring the dogs in, they leave them off, and then they're gone, and then someone else comes in, and it's kind of staggered.
Mike, 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 it's...
And that's a, you know, that's a larger facility.
More, more people coming in and leaving the facility at the same time because it didn't, and I'll go back and take a look at it. I didn't, don't recall exactly how wide the access road was.
Well, my concern would be the size of her property is, you know, really not that big of a piece of property to be accompanying a real lot of dogs.
Right.
You know, where you, you know, you got the outside kennels, what, three kennels out there with the dogs, plus the kennels that are inside. So to accommodate, you know, 20 dogs would not suit that property.
Right, no, I agree.
So putting a number on this, I would feel good about, you know. She wants to go beyond that, she has to find a new, new location, you know? It's just not suitable, that piece of property, you know, that much.
Good, so there is no cap on this, on the number of dogs?
Well, it, right, because it says commercial kennel, but commercial kennel is the one that allows boarding and grooming. But then again, by special permit, you can have it in a residential agricultural area. So I, I think it's really up to the board, you know, to figure out kind of a, you know, kind of a number, given the circumstances.
When do, do you have to renew your license for this? Is it every two years?
Doesn't have one.
Well, I mean, that's what this is for, right? Is, is it for a license, or what is this for?
Yeah, I believe this was to, at town, we're gonna, pretty much, meet every year.
Well, I believe it is annually.
Yeah, you said it would be annually.
There is a licensing requirement through the town clerk's office for registering your dogs. So that's one aspect of it. And then the other aspect of it is just taking a use that requires a special permit in providing the, you know...
So what if we come up with a cap? And somehow, you know, think about a cap between now and our next meeting, okay? And that would, and if you wanted to change that, then, you know, we could rewrite it into the conditions that if it was to increase over the num, the number that we approved of, that you would have to come back to the planning board and have a public hearing? So that would include the neighbors, so that the neighbors could have a, tell us how they felt about it?
Well, I think you need a cap, but I think going forward, it's probably gonna, you know, whatever cap you set is gonna be the cap because unless someone tears down their house and, you know, another commercial property opens up, okay, well then, maybe that's, that's a situation and you say, okay, it's not as impactful on the neighborhood. But I think, given the size of the property, you know, which have their, you kind of have to come up with a number, and, and then that's it. You know, if you move into another location where, you know, the larger property, you can handle more dogs, and that's a different situation.
Right.
Sorry, but we, we just look at it like, more, more dogs, more noise.
Yeah, no, I, no, I can understand, that's why, it just surprises me, there's nothing in our bylaws that puts a cap on this. Because, I mean, if you had 10 acres or 20 acres somewhere in Cava, and your house was in the middle of it, it might not be that important. But I mean, when you have a smaller piece of property and you have neighbors nearby, then it, then it's a lot more important.
Right, and you got people like Curry, but 90% of her dogs are inside a building, so you're not hearing them bark. She does put some outside that we do hear sometimes, but it's just a few at a time. So the majority of her dogs are inside in cages in the building. So, I mean, if she's going to do a bigger business, maybe you could look at getting a building to put them in, and then it would be quieter, something like that.
Well, I did know when we went out, and I think it was on our first site walk, there was a gentleman there, and he was talking about training one dog at a time on the property. And, but he was also telling us about devices that they have to keep the dogs quiet with, dog, dog collars that kind of give the dogs a little shock or whatever, and it stops the dogs from barking. They also have something, he was talking about, that you can put in the yard, that if the dogs are barking, you press a button or whatever, and it would, it gives out some sort of sound that makes the dogs stop barking. But the dogs were pretty quiet when we went there. They think it was just one dog that barked a couple times, that was it. So what do you suggest? We come, come up with a cap between now and our next meeting?
Right, yeah, no...
I mean, if you could tell us, you know, I mean...
Could you come up to the microphone, please?
Yeah. You can come up to this one here if you want. Oh, is there a chair there?
No.
So I just, I just wanted to make a note that, is this on?
Yep.
So I know this is a somewhat different situation, but there are some commercial kennels in the area. And if you go visit them, you'll see a very small space that they use for the dogs. And these people have like 50 plus dogs. I don't know... I don't know where they put them.
Here in Carver?
But, no, in, uh, there's one in Wareham, um, that's new, um, can't remember what it's called, Coast, something Coast Dogs, I think, South Coast Dogs, maybe? Um, but, so I've been to a lot of doggy daycares, and I've seen smaller versions like that, and then huge, huge warehouses that have, like-
Yeah.
-hundreds of dogs.
Yep.
Um, so, I'm just making that a note as a kind of gauge to, like, visually, if you're thinking of visual space, if you're looking at my property and saying, oh, that's too small visually, or if you're thinking about it from a different perspective, someone mentioned people coming in and out, that's a different angle, um, as far as having all the dogs out at one time, I don't do that. I rotate them in and out, because that's the way I can manage them, um, so, um, I guess that's, that's it, and then there was something else I wanted to note, but I can't remember, so.
Well, when you mentioned the warehouses, that's all res, uh, that's all commercial property.
Those are, that's why-
It's not in a residential area.
Right.
That makes the big difference there. Your neighbors-
Well, Rich, I can kind of speak a little bit about this, we have the Dog Mall right down the street from my house.
Yeah, I do know, yeah.
Um, and that's not a big piece of property. I, I have no idea how many dogs they have, uh, and I don't know how they board or anything else like that, but I do know that they have, uh, they have, they, activity days, and-
They don't board, though.
They don't board?
They don't board.
Okay.
It's not, it's not a kennel, it's just a training facility.
Just a training facility, yeah, I know that they have a bunch of different, um-
Therapeutic.
Yeah, uh, dog activity days and stuff like that, and you, uh, but, as, as you were saying, um, it's a, they have essentially a warehouse, and, like you said, it's, it's not on a big piece of property, either. Um, and I've been to a couple of other places, uh, with, with my guys, I've got three, that, um, have lots of space, other places, um, small spaces, but again, it, it all depends on the facilities available, and the, um, um-
Probably got some number of employees to help.
Yes, and the, and the big thing is the number of employees to help, uh, as well, so, when, when I, when I'm thinking about it, one of the concerns that I have, uh, as much for your, your personal living conditions as having, uh, kennels in the basement, um, not that it's, not that it's a bad location or bad spot to have anybody or anything else like that, but thinking of your personal living, uh, conditions, and not really being able to have a break from, uh, the dogs and stuff like that. Uh, but, um, but yeah, it's, uh, Rich, to, to speak to Richard's, uh, point, um, I think that two acres, um, is very adequate for quite a number of dogs, um, and, um, I used to go to a dog park a lot, and big groups of dogs there all the time, didn't hear a whole lot of barking out of it. Usually, the dogs, when they're out there, they're engaged with each other, they're not really barking, you probably have one or two yip dogs that, uh, that are like the fun police, that trying to interfere with everybody else, having a good time, but, um, the, with regards to that stuff, I don't think, I think that, uh, approximately one and a half acres of open space you've got there is, uh, I think it's plenty of space, um, for, uh, for being able to manage at minimum of fifteen dogs. But, uh, like you said, the, I, and, and I, I also recognize the, uh, the concern with the noise, because I, I know from my guys, they get out there and they see a rabbit, and they just go nuts.
We've got lots of rabbits.
And I, I yell at my guys all the time to, to quiet down for the neighbors, because I know that they don't particularly, I, I can't imagine they particularly appreciate my guys at six o'clock in the morning.
Well, when, the common denominator here appears to be that if you want to have more dogs, it mostly structure or buildings that would allow you to do that, so if I might make that suggestion to the board.
Right, that would be, that would be my big thing, is-
Yeah, if you had a cap, and maybe if, if, if Miriam wanted to exceed that cap, that she was able to build housing for the dogs, so that the noises would be, you know, contained.
Yeah, proper facilities.
We've been asking for that all along, and I, I'm not going to try to spend my neighbor's money, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to make the suggestion, that's all.
Right.
And her piece of land, and when she's saying she has two acres, it's not near the house. One, one of, part of her land is way off on the other side of the bog, it's not even usable.
Yeah, well, I was just looking at the, uh, I was looking at the survey.
I don't, I don't even know if she would have room to make a building. Do you think you'd have room to make a building?
Um, there is an existing, uh, foundation on the property, and when we all, when Bruce and Jim came out and walked the property, it turned out that it's, goes alongside the bog, right, guys?
Yeah, we've seen it, what the collapsed building is.
Yeah, I think that, I'm pretty sure that's on the property, I'm not a hundred percent, but I think that's not necessarily ideal, but I'm say, like, as far as you'd have to get, otherwise I'd have to get a variance or a special permit or something-
Yeah, I've got that up to build.
-to add, because where we, everything we have on there had to get special permits and variants before, so-
Yeah, I didn't know that was part of that, too.
-that's the problem with building, is, is just where we're located for adding anything is a major project.
Yeah.
So, even the fence, like, just the fence location has to be exact to protect the wetlands, so, um, yeah, so it's, it's, that's a little tricky. But, uh, and then, as far as the commercial, yes, I, I agree, like, the, the commercial, uh, kennels are different from a, a home-based kennel. Um, I, I did wonder, though, is, there are some home-based kennels around here, do they have a cap? Is that like a, a new idea, or is that, um-
Well, most of them, I think, only had, like, six or eight dogs, or something like that, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I mean, this is the largest amount of dogs that, that I've come upon-
Wow.
-doing this, yeah, yeah.
Well, hopefully you can make enough money for yourself and not need to hire anyone, and keep the dog number down.
Yeah.
Because that would make everybody happy, I think.
I don't know that there is, off the top of my head, I don't know any, the examples you gave us of what we've done in Carver don't show that they've had overnight visits, and, mm, most of them are Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM.
Yeah, just drop off and pick up, yeah.
And then, there's some things like, uh, when out on leash, only two dogs, two visiting animals should be walked at a time, and, there's a few other things, no more than ten dogs on the premises at one time, including dogs owned by the applicant, and this is just one of the other ones. Quarterly inspections. I mean, there, there are things. Now, how many were you planning on keeping per night overnight? Because this, in your application, it says you're currently doing four, average on four overnights?
Yeah, that, um, the overnights are really sporadic, like, this past couple weeks, I've had more than usual, so, and, and more than usual means four, like, literally four.
Okay.
And so, and, and that's really, I think, the most I've had, um, they, they're generally just spread out, um, it, it's not a big part of my business, um, it's just kind of an adjunct, um, so, and it's usually, like, you know, it's holidays and vacations, um, so, um, yeah.
And, and your planned business hours were seven days a week, seven AM to seven PM?
Yeah, but I'm going to need to modify that, just so I could have a life. It'll help you guys, too.
I'm not objecting to that.
Right, because, because I think one of the, one of the caveats here were that the dogs weren't allowed out in the yard before eight AM in the morning, is that objectionable, or?
No, that's not objectionable.
And if you were closed Sundays?
I, I, I don't object to that.
Okay, no, I'm just asking.
I mean, you guys can throw, yeah, you can throw out ideas, I'm, I, honestly, the reason I did that initially was just to get people to come.
Sure.
And now I'm like, I'm good, I'll, I'll cut down a little bit.
Get an established routine.
Yeah, so-
So, so, so does that mean you'd be willing to do, like, five days a week, or?
Um, I mean, I tr, I actually was thinking about it, honestly.
Really? She's thinking about five days a week?
Yeah, I mean, I try to be, I try to stay flexible, because you never know, people, sometimes people need, but, um, you know, and it's honestly, usually the people come on weekends are boarders.
Yeah.
So, it's not like a full-on doggy daycare day, um, I, I do have dogs myself, so that they're always going to be there, but, um, yeah.
Who was the, um, surveyor that you used?
Um, Art, Arthur Borden.
Oh, it was Arthur Borden?
Yeah, do you guys know him?
Yeah, I do, I've used Arthur before, I used, I've lived in Carver since nineteen eighty-one, so, forty years, okay.
All right, so, I guess, I guess we'll continue this until August twenty-fourth. Hopefully you'll have your fence moved back by then, uh-
I thought, sorry, I thought you said September.
I'm, uh, what did we say? Oh, September, yeah.
Yeah, because she needs to-
Yeah, that's right, I'm sorry, yeah, September twenty-eighth.
September twenty, okay.
Would, uh, would be, uh, last meeting date in September, yeah.
Okay.
So if you could do that, um, and if Jim could come up with, we'll do some conditions then.
Right. Also, I think if you think about, because you're talking about possibly reducing hours or the days, if you could send us something, you know, what you're agreeable with, um, so if you do want to reduce your hours, you can just provide them to us, um, and then we can, uh, you know, include that as part of the decision.
Okay.
Um, and then also think about, you know, what kind of limitation on the number of dogs you want to have, um, and then, you know, maybe, you know, the limitation on dogs relates to the, um, the doggy daycare dogs, but, um, recognize, excuse me, recognizing you're also doing some one-on-one dog training, um, so that could, you know, be a factor in that as well.
Okay.
Well, actually, you're going to have three, you've got three things going there, you're going to have dog training, which is just one dog, you have, uh, doggy daycare, which is another part of the business, and then you also have boarding, which is another part of the business, so there's like three things going on there.
Yeah, the, the, the training's not me, though, because I'm not a trainer.
Yeah, and it's only one dog.
So, that's kind of dependent on, on the trainer that I'm working with, so-
Yeah.
It's, that's like, kind of in the works, just so you know, it's not like a, it's not like a set-in-stone thing right now.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I have consistently boarded and had doggy daycare, and just hoping to bring the training into it, so.
So when you board, do you mix the doggy daycare dogs with the boarding animals also in the pens outside?
Yes, unless, unless they're not amicable.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Yeah.
All right, yeah, if you, yeah, you can have a discussion with Jim about that, and I, I'm not going to close the public hearing, because you, when we have our next hearing, you, you may want over ten, and we'll go through the conditions and see, you know, how, how you feel about it.
Okay.
Okay, because I, yeah, I, I don't want anybody to feel left out on this, I want everybody have their say. All right, so, uh, I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Miriam Gory on one forty-nine South Main Street to seven o'clock, seven o'clock, September twenty-eighth.
Can you, Shayso makes that motion?
Ms. Second.
Okay, Ellen Second, further discussion, seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, so that was unanimous. All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right, uh, the last on the agenda tonight is, uh, on the application of Galehead Development requesting a special permit and site plan review, uh, pursuant to section twenty-two thirty, thirty-one hundred, thirty-seven hundred, thirty-five eighty, and fifty-three hundred of the Carver zoning bylaw, and this particular project is located at Zero Meadow Street, and this is for a one-megawatt, um, large-scale ground mounted solar photovoltaic installation. Um, there has, it has been requested, I see that everybody's gone, so it's been requested to continue this, uh, to, uh, seven o'clock, August twenty-fourth. So, entertain a motion to continue, uh, Galehead Development, special permit and site plan on Zero Main Street to seven o'clock, August twenty-fourth.
Can you, Shayso makes that motion?
Ellen Second.
Ellen Second, okay, further discussion, seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. All right, uh, the next, so that, uh, finishes up everything we have on the agenda as far as public meetings.
That's fair.
So we have, uh, planning board member notes, anybody has anything to say? Okay, planning director notes.
Uh, got nothing other than, just to remind people that there's no meeting on August tenth, and then the next meeting is August twenty-fourth. And then we have, uh, documents to sign at the end here.
All right, we have the minutes of seven thirteen twenty-one. Has everybody had time to look at them?
I just need a minute.
Sure.
That's the, uh-
Oh, you don't-
A and R plan.
It's A and R plan.
It was endorsed before you, uh, came.
Yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't there for that.
Sorry.
So everybody's had a chance to look at that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of seven thirteen twenty-one.
John Gasky makes the motion.
Can you leave Shay seconds?
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstentions, okay. So, uh, next meeting, uh, will be August ten, oh, uh, August twenty-fourth, and our August tenth meeting is canceled, so August twenty-fourth, and I don't know, are you going to be able, are you going to be gone the twenty-fourth?
I will, but I will make every effort to get back.
You, well, you can, or you can do remote disipation, too.
One way or the other.
And you can, and could talk to Jim about that.
I will do my best to be here.
Okay.
Don't put everything over here, Jim.
Uh-uh. Be spilled.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Can you, Shayso makes that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Ellen, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that was unanimous. Uh, good night, everyone, and thank you.